Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the Moreno Valley City Council. Today is September 4th and it's 5:33 PM. The first order of business is our business Spotlight. And first business is Marinage Banquet Hall. Marinage Banquets and Events is a beautiful and upscale state-of-the-art facility, fully equipped, and with two event rooms, full kitchen, full bars, bridal suite, exterior patios, and fully-integrated light and sound systems. Located at 22605 Alessandra Boulevard, Marinage Banquets and Events has been in business for the past seven years. With various packages to choose from, hosts are certain to find the perfect amenities without sacrificing the trend-setting event of their dreams. Owner Najee Domit decided on the unique name of his business by putting together his name and his wife, Mary. Mr. Domit enjoys his ability to bring a glamorous event hall to the inland empire. He is very active in the community and enjoys the opportunity to watch the city's growth and expansion over the years. Let's watch this video.
No matter what the occasion is, Marinage makes it special and unforgettable. Our glamorous banquet halls can accommodate up to 600 guests for your special day. Planning becomes a breeze with our various ballroom packages. We offer luxurious ballrooms, full kitchen catering, state-of-the-art lighting and audio, a private dressing room, full bar, and much more. Marinage Banquets and Events, Hollywood glamour right here in Moreno Valley.
Thank you Najee and Mary, please come on up, up here. So we're presenting you with this beautiful certificate. Stand here Mary. And I can attest to the beautiful facility at Marinage. If you want to get married, have a baptism, fundraiser, just about anything, right? You have different rooms and different prices and you'd be very impressed to be down there. I've seen it firsthand. So that's a certificate from the city. Thank you for doing business in Moreno Valley. And I'm giving you the drive so that you can post this video on your website, on Facebook, and use it anywhere you want. And it'll be playing on Channel 3 every day for the next month. So would you like to say some words?
Sure. I would like to thank the city of Moreno Valley, Pro Tem Baca, and all the city councils, and the planning department, the building department, the police, the manager, city manager, everybody. It was really a combination of a lot of effort that made by everyone to come to this result of this banquet hall. We're very proud to have this place, especially in Moreno Valley, that I believe that everyone is going to be proud of it when you see it. And I am gonna invite you soon for a grand opening where you really can see more than 22nd. You guys can come and any event that the city would like to have, you guys are welcome at a very discount price. And thank you, thank you Steve for that video and you did a great job. Everyone else did the same, so appreciate it, you know. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. It was a pleasure working with the whole city and it took everyone to come to something like this and succeed in this part of the banquet hall. Thank you again.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, just in case you're familiar with the old Marinage, which was on the corner of Alessandra and Ellsworth, behind the Jack-in-the-Box, they've moved a little east on Alessandra, so it's 22605 Alessandra Boulevard. So don't get confused and please come visit. Thank you.
Thank you. I will invite you one day, all of you, for grand opening. Yeah, thank you.
Just give them another round of applause. Okay, our second business spotlight is Cold Stone Creamery. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present a certificate of recognition to manager Laura
Good evening, everyone. Tonight in District 4, we're recognizing one of our businesses. I stop by pretty often and I know the place gets packed a lot. One time I ran into one of the school board members there as well. And the business we're recognizing tonight is Cold Stone Creamery, which is a fun, family-friendly establishment with a dessert for every occasion. Located at 25960 Iris Avenue, Cold Stone has been in business for the past 13 years, serving and watching the regulars grow from young children to college graduates. Their unique ice cream, ice cream cakes and waffle cones are made fresh daily in the store. Cold Stone Creamery has 21 signature creations to choose from, such as Founder's Favorite that includes sweet cream ice cream with pecans, brownie, fudge, and caramel. Owner Devin Gill prides himself on their customer service and amazing ice cream cakes. His favorite part about doing business in Moreno Valley is the business-friendly atmosphere and great members of the community. I also want to thank Cold Stone and the manager who's here with us tonight, Laura Reyes. They attended our business spotlight just last week, which was really successful, so thank you as well. And the manager, Ms. Laura Reyes, can you please join me up here? Can we give them a round of applause? And on behalf of the city of Moreno Valley, I do have this certificate for you, so you can go ahead and put this up inside the store or whatever the owner wants to do with it, that is for you. And I also have a USB as well. And we do have a video here, if we can go ahead and roll that, please.
If you're in the mood for ice creamer, just something sweet, come to Cold Stone. We make the treats you crave. With over 20 flavors and toppings to choose from, you can try one of our signature creations or create your own dream concoction. Indulge in one of our signature shakes or smoothies. You can also pick up one of our delicious handmade ice cream cakes, perfect for any occasion. Come see why we proudly serve the best tasting, made-to-order ice cream you've ever had. Cold Stone Creamery, ice cream your way. Like it or love it today.
Alrighty, and on this USB is that video, so you can share it online with everyone. If your lines weren't long enough yet, they're gonna be even longer now, out the door. And now I know where I'm going after this council meeting, because the summer is almost over and I'm gonna get me some ice cream. And Ms. Laura Reyes, do you have a few words?
I want to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to do this. I was so excited to watch the video finally. We also offer catering. If anybody needs catering, we offer catering for festivals, weddings, birthday parties. And we also have cakes for every, I mean, for weddings, birthdays, whatever you decide, we make it there, we won't say no. And once again, thank you. This is very special for us. Thank you.
Our next presentation is recognition of the Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee of the First Quarter, Mary Hackworth. If you can please join us at the mic. Okay, here's a certificate from the city council on behalf of the mayor and the city council, and it's awarded as recognition of the Classified Employee of the Quarter, First Quarter 2018. So once again, congratulations and thank you for your service. Would you like to say some words?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. It really means a lot to me that you recognize the hard work that I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take a picture? I'm sorry, our chief is gonna present some handcuffs.
On behalf of the police department, I present you with your Officer of the Quarter handcuffs.
Thank you.
Will you stay here so we can take some pictures?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, congratulations to the employee of the first quarter, Mary Hackworth. councilmember Cabrera will be presenting the proclamation to Emergency Management Program Manager Suzette Rikner.
Okay, alright, do we have, everyone else, please come up. Everyone else, the whole team, join us up here. Thank you. Alright, there we go. We'll have a nice, full picture. Alright. How you doing? Alright, everyone come around, plenty of space. Alright, ready to go. Alrighty, and today is September 4th, is National Preparedness Month, and we're here to recognize staff, part of our fire department, and you know, our city is just, it keeps growing. It keeps growing, it's getting bigger. A lot of people are moving to our city, and as our city continues to grow, as a regional leader, the city of Moreno Valley prioritizes the safety of our citizens. That's always number one, public safety. And to that end, the city council stands with the Office of Emergency Management, which is everyone up here, and also a few others as well, to encourage our residents to be proactive and prepare for emergencies before they occur. Residents may find many helpful resources through the Office of Emergency Management and at ready.gov to identify local partners, build neighborhood teams, and set goals to increase the likelihood that our neighbors, friends, and family will have the necessary tools and plans to minimize the impact of disasters or emergencies in our community. We have a lot of different programs, for example, the CERT program. A lot of our residents here are volunteers, I've met a few of them actually. They have their packs ready to go inside their cars for any situation. Once they're called, they're ready to go. And that's really good that we have residents here in our city that live in homes just like you and I, but they went through the process, they learned these extra skills, along with CPR classes and all kinds of stuff for any situation, and that's very valuable. And I'm really happy that we have that, and this team is, you know, where it starts. So we have this proclamation here, on behalf of the city of Moreno Valley, and for National Preparedness Month today, September 4th of 2018, and it reads, "Whereas the city of Moreno Valley recognizes a need to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies, and to persuade individuals to take action by preparing a disaster supply kit, creating a family emergency plan, and knowing the hazards. And whereas, members of a community are often the first to take action after disaster strikes and before responders, before first responders arrive. And so the city of Moreno Valley takes this time, following the devastating wildfires and hurricanes of 2017, to remind the community of the importance of being prepared for disasters. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize September 2018 as National Preparedness Month, and encourage all members of the community to be proactive in preparing for any emergency and any disaster in order to help the overall community." And accepting this proclamation today is the Emergency Management Program Manager Suzette Bricker. And would you like to share a few words? I can hold that for you if you like. There you go. We can clap, go ahead and clap.
Just want to thank the city for recognizing National Preparedness Month. They've been doing this year after year after year. It is very, very important that we continue promoting national preparedness, not only for the month of September, but all year long. We've seen a lot of earthquakes, a lot of fires, a lot of activity, they're gonna keep on coming, and the more we prepare, the more we plan for them, the better we're gonna be as a community, as a country overall. So thank you guys for, again, recognizing National Preparedness Month and always being such a resilient city, looking forward. Thank you.
We don't know what an emergency is until it strikes. So folks, if you're listening out there, get trained, get prepared. Thank you so much to our Emergency Management Team for all you do for the residents of Moreno Valley. That concludes our special presentations. The regular city council meeting will start at 6:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Service District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. Tonight is a regular meeting, it's September 4th, 2018, and it's about 6:04 PM. I now call this meeting to order on September 4th at 6:03 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright, and please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Lieutenant Jen Liggett of the Salvation Army.
Everyone please honor the flag and recite, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Bow your heads with me as we ask for God's blessing. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight. We pray your blessing upon it. We thank you for your sons and daughters that have come with servant hearts, seeking to better serve their community, seeking to better the city of Moreno Valley and the surrounding area. We ask that you bless each one of your children that is here, that you bless the meeting, and that you would grant them the wisdom and guidance that they need to make decisions for the benefit of all. In the name of my Savior, Jesus, amen.
City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Gaiba.
I am here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mayor Gutierrez is absent.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Angel Miguel, Executive Assistant to the Mayor and City Council.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sanzmar, Community Development Director.
David Kurlowitz, Chief of Police.
Mark Williams, Battalion Chief, Fire Department.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you. The city is currently offering Spanish translation if anyone needs assistance. The equipment is in the back, please help yourself to the service. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep comments respectful towards others, especially to the speaker at the podium. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting, and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful toward one another at this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with a comment. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have so far?
One.
Pardon me?
One.
One? And that's for non-agenda?
For non-agenda.
And for agenda items?
None.
None? Okay. Alright. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the city council, may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council. The city clerk will call three names, well, we only have one, at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond to any public comments, and council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Okay, if we can have the first speaker up?
Veronica Steele.
Veronica Steele?
My name is Veronica Steele, and if you recall, I was here the beginning of this year. I am a 30-year resident of Moreno Valley. I'm a property owner, taxpayer, and a consumer. And the reason why I came last, the last time, was because I've noticed that code enforcement, they have a closed eye, or they're blind to certain things, and things are not being enforced. Our property values have gone down tremendously, and I think that if we enforce the code, our municipal code, then we might have a chance of bringing up those property values. Why let them go down if we have codes enforced? Why not enforce them? So that's why I'm here. I've talked to code enforcement, I've been told that, oh, we're gonna do something, or we advertise on, I think one of the stations was MTV. Who watches MTV? I don't. I said, why don't we send out some type of written notification to all residents, because we have a lot of new residents since I've been here, since 1986. We also have a lot of rental properties that the owners are not advising their new residents that are their tenants, that we do have rules here that need to be enforced. For instance, the trash, number one. When should the trash can be out? Well, I can call the city council, and while I'm waiting to speak to someone, recording comes on, here we go. Please take in your trash can. Okay, please, let them know there is a rule, and we need to all abide by those rules, but before we can all abide by them, we need to be advised of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time?
Mayor Pro Tem, there's two other speakers that just submitted slips.
Okay.
Palomares and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, council staff. First of all, I want to just put a shout-out to fire and police, the great job that they do. Seen some stuff on TV, on our channel, about a little girl that drowned, or she was drowning, and the fire department, police department did, well, saved her life, put it that way. But what I'm really here to talk about is, I watched the city council, the last one, when they had the outsiders come in, you know, at the invitation of Gaiba, I'm sure he'll deny it, but, you know, the city manager and the city attorney cleared it up, said that the skate park or the money that was being spent didn't have to go through a financial committee or anything, you know. But, you know, Gaiba's usually the one that'll tell you, I want to know everything, and I know everything, and I'm gonna tell you everything. But he didn't know that, that, you know, he's campaigning, you know, he bashes the staff, the city council, the mayor. Once when they had a city council here, he was, well, in the newspaper I had read where he was saying, when people were calling in, talking to the mayor, you know, phone calls that the mayor was taking with residents regarding any concerns or issues they had, and, you know, he was making fun of it. But yeah, two weeks later, he says he's having a meet and greet, and he'll feed you. That sounds like a bribe to me. You know, so if you're gonna play, play fair. You know, the whole problem here is with you, is that you haven't accomplished anything in the four years that you've been on the dais. You say on your political science, job creation. Tell me one job you've created. But I know you'll clean it up. So I look at the city council's record of what they've done and the staff, and it's great, they've done a great job. You know, you, you just try to use them, because it's, you know, I know you're running for mayor and it's that time of the season, so you use them as scapegoats, because you have nothing to stand on, you know, you don't, you don't get involved, you knock them, you criticize them, you know, be a team player, like they say, lead, follow, or get out of the way. And I think you need to get out of the way.
Next, Luis Palomares.
Wow, I agree with Bob. It was a friasco last meeting. A circus came to town. We had all the outsiders, the liars club, the obstructionists out of Riverside. What are they doing in our backyard? Oh, she's gonna be at every meeting, oh, where is she? I mean, they've come to disrupt. I mean, they'd come to disrupt. I asked her, take care of your own Riverside. There's a lot of things, problems over there. Oh, no, we got them all fixed. Come on. I said, we all got homeless in every surrounding city. Go fix it, go help. The mayor's doing something to help fix that. You know? And Gaiba, you know, everything was a no, a no, a no. I talked to my grandson. He's seen this meeting. He was amazed, and other skaters seen it. What? He voted against the skate park? Grandma, wasn't he sitting there when we read the petition? Yeah, honey, but he's saying he don't know nothing. And there was plenty of meetings he didn't go to because he don't want to be a part of it. Because if he didn't make it happen, he don't want to be a part of it. This has been in the strategic plan for a long time coming. The difference, we're not in, you know, it takes an act of Congress to do something with Gaiba. He wants to do this, this study, that study, all these studies. Put them in the shelf and nothing gets done. Come on. There's a, there's a lot of ways we can do things without going through all that red tape and everything else. There is, and there's no serial meetings, and there's none of this stuff that they were talking about. It's a bunch of bull jiving Gaiba, you know. I'm just so sick of him. He brings these people out here to bash our council. The council members are doing a great job. You know, Gaiba, you're supposed to be taking care of the, up there, you know, in Sunny Mead Ranch, there's nothing there. It's still empty, the building. You voted against the Canyon Springs Stadium up there. Those kids were glad. They had the first graduation class after 32 years. 32 years. You voted against the crossing guards. You voted against the, you know, the new amphitheater here. You voted against the skate park. What's wrong with you, Gaiba? I don't understand your logic. But you want, you wanted to do the Badlands over there. Oh, the Badlands. It would've cost us millions of dollars to do that. And that was, oh, that would've been a good idea for you, right? And also this storm drain nonsense. You didn't let anybody know anything about that. Like I said, I came, you know, over here. I was going to the council, the school board. I said, are you serious? That's what he's trying to do? Push this down the council's throat? Are you privatizing our storm drains? You know what that would've cost us? A lot, but it was your pal and your buddy, and you weren't real transparent about that. That would've cost us a lot of money to privatize our storm drains. It's already included in our bill here. Now, we would've been getting a separate bill. And if we don't pay that bill, we get behind, there goes a lien on our house. And if the pipes break in overtime, that would've cost us a fortune. That was a Gaiba idea. You know, it's just ridiculous, Gaiba. When are you gonna grow up? You know, I want it now. You're like the kid in Willy Wonka. I want it now. Come on, grow up. It's not about you. It's about the community as a whole. It's about the people here as a whole. It's not about you, Gaiba. It's bigger than you, and it's bigger than me, and it's bigger than all of us in this room. It's about our community. It's about our taxpayers. It's about our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Palomares.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Rafael Brugueras.
Good evening. We thought it would work up Protembaka. Councilmembers, staff, residents, and I guess, the pleasure to be back in California. I just came back from Puerto Rico. I had to put my father in the home, can't take care of himself. So I had to do that for him. But I'm glad to be back. And I'll talk about Puerto Rico later because it's pertaining to jobs and productivity in the future for Moreno Valley. Because we don't want to be like Puerto Rico. Never want to be like Puerto Rico. Beautiful country, beautiful place, but we don't want to be like Puerto Rico. We want to have our own things and pay for our own things. But I'm gonna take something that Bob mentioned. Gabby did a few things. He voted for the World Justice Center. That he did right. That gave the ball the role. It got me involved to fight for jobs. That's why I was on the corner holding up the sign yelling for jobs. See, he did that right. But he takes it back. He takes it back when he has pressure with the opposition. He takes it back. Instead of glowing on his goodness, you'll write that down and use it later. And he can, he would've done well. But he did terrible throughout the last couple, definitely the last couple of years with a lot of no's. And I can prove it because I can go back to the videos. And he just proved it last week by voting no on the skate park. It was very simple. He could've done that, but I'm making it in the political. But we have a beautiful city because of the men and women that fight for progress in this city. And that's what we want, Moreno Valley residents. You're gonna have an opportunity in November to keep it going, or slow it down, or it comes to a complete stop. Puerto Rico could be another Moreno Valley, but they choose not to. And we in Moreno Valley are not gonna be another Puerto Rico as long as I live in this city with men and women that fight for jobs and productivity. We have a great staff that follows the law and the rules and all the finances. They bring us awards time after time. That is not mentioned a lot more. They do a fantastic job for this city. That's why we're at, that's why we're at where we're at. We're number three in the nation. We owe nothing to nobody but small debt that we are committed to. Do not become another Puerto Rico Valley or Puerto Rico.
Thank you, Mr. Brugueras. We're moving into the consent calendar, the joint consent calendar, Sections A to D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, Sections A, B, C, and D, are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Service District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees requests that an item be removed for a separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Would any council member like to pull anything off the consent calendar?
Yes, I would.
Councilman Gaiba?
A3 for just a question, discussion. A5 for a separate vote. A6 for a separate vote. And A8 for discussion and a question.
Okay, let's do A3, your, and A3 and A8, your questions.
Was there anybody else? The only one, okay.
Okay. Councilman Cabrera?
Yes, I'd like to pull, just for discussion, A4 and A11.
Mr. Marquez? Okay. Councilman Gaiba, A3 and A8. Questions to staff?
Yeah, sure. A3 is basically an observation, and I wanted to know why we've been truncating our minutes. We used to have fairly comprehensive minutes. Those were the ones that the public actually had an opportunity to read over and listen to what's actually taking place. And I'm watching the minutes. Now, they're just action minutes, and I'm not quite sure the, the public is actually seeing all the information that's being published here. It would be nice if we went back to doing like Kathy used to do, and she'd transcribe as best she possibly can for us. I have, I would have no problem with actually hiring somebody separately to do the transcriptions, so that the public actually gets the entire story. So that's my, my comments on that one.
A8?
Resident asked me to ask this question, and so I'll ask this question publicly. I don't care who wants to respond to it, or even if you do, I hope you will. A8 dealt with the authorization to award bid to NCO Utility Services. It's an observation that was made from a resident and asked for me to pull it and ask this question. How does this comply with Prop 26? Moreno Valley ratepayers should not be paying for streetlights that a general fund expenditure should be. I don't know what the answer is to that one, but it would be nice if the public got that answer. I never, I've been working with Candace for a long time on this. So this, this one came as a surprise to me, but they seem to have researched. I, I synopscized it, so maybe I did say it right or wrong. The question was, how does this comply to Prop 26? And Moreno, Moreno Valley ratepayers should question, should the rate, Moreno Valley ratepayers not be paying for streetlights that a general fund expenditure should be? So. Anybody wants to respond to that? That would be.
Mayor, Mayor Protembaka, members of the council. The staff report provides a very comprehensive presentation on what's actually before the council tonight, and that is simply a contract to retrofit the streetlights with LED fixtures.
Thank you.
Where was the money coming from? And where was the money coming from? I think that was what the question was.
Yeah, it's not general fund. The item was that the council, yourself included, approved a financing for the acquisition as well as the LED retrofit of the streetlights. And those are, those are borne by ratepayers by those who pay into the Streetlight Assessment District.
And I think that was what the question actually asked is, it should probably be paid for by the general fund, is what the question was. And maybe we were flawed in our, in our understanding when that decision was made.
There is a general fund component to the streetlight charges that pays for the general benefit that the city derives from lights that are not specifically in front of individual homes or businesses. That is the general fund component.
Thank you.
Councilman Cabrera, A4?
Thank you. I just want to briefly mention or talk about this item because it's the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the college. This is the second year that we're actually gonna assist in the College Promise Program, and it's amazing. I mean, talking to these students, we actually recognized a few of them recently at one of our events. And we're gonna continue this partnership. And, I mean, we're investing in our future. We're investing in our students, in the, the people, the individuals who are gonna go on from Moreno Valley College, get a four-year degree or a CTE, a certificate, and then come back to our city and, and make a living, bring back their families, buy a house here, and, and pay, pay taxes here and call this their home. So I'm really happy, just wanted to point that out, that this is the second year that we are going to allocate $50,000 to the College Promise Program to help students. And I hope that we continue this because it's a very successful program over at the college, and I'm, I'm very, very happy to support this.
Thank you. A11?
And A11 has to do with the San Juan Baptista de Anza Trail that runs all the way through the city. Good, good portion of it is complete already, and it looks very, very nice. But over, actually, A11 is the next step in allocating the funding and moving toward completing most of the trail. And, and I just want to see if, I guess, Michael Wolf, do you have anything to add regarding A11?
Well, I'd like to add, first of all, good evening, Mayor Protembaka, councilmembers. This is a very exciting project. This is ATP funds, so it's good to utilize those funds for this project. This is the southern section. This will be the connection between us and the Lake Paris and the southern section. So this is a very exciting section that we want to finish.
Thank you. And I've been spreading the word. I think 2020, we're supposed to complete this section from Iris all the way to Rancho Verde High School sometime in 2020. Is that right?
That's, that's the program year for the construction. That's correct.
Yeah, so it's exciting. We'll be able to connect all the way to Lake Paris with the new trail, and really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I entertain a motion by council to approve the consent calendars with exception of A5 and A6, which will be a separate vote.
I'll move that.
Jeff Gaiba, motion. Cabrera, second. Please vote. Is it because of Mayor's calendars?
Motion passes for ice.
Thank you. Okay, we're at the public hearings. E1, City Manager.
Rick, would you like to update the council?
Mayor Protembaka and members of the City Council, this evening, the item before you is a request for a public hearing that has been noticed for this evening. The applicant and the staff have entertained a lot of questions that have come in from the public. And in light of those, those comments and questions that have come in, the applicant and I have discussed the benefit of their interest in continuing this item to a future meeting. At that, they'd like to have it continued to a date certain, that date being October 3rd. That would give adequate time for both the staff and the applicant to review some of the materials that have come in. And so I'd like to make that request on their behalf.
Okay, and if there's anyone in the audience that was gonna speak on item E1, you'll be given the opportunity on October 3rd to address the council. We'll go to item F, A5 and A6. A5, Merrill appointments to the Emerging Leaders Council and the Planning Commission, report of the City Clerk.
Mayor Protembaka and councilmembers, this is just a ratification of the mayor's appointees to the Emerging Leader Councils and the formal appointment of the two alternates to the Planning Commission positions. They've been planning commissioners stepping in because they've been taking the place of commissioners that have left. So these are just ratifications to both the Emerging Leader Council and the Planning Commission alternates becoming full members. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Gaiba?
This appears to be the same application that was presented the first time around, am I correct?
What application, sir?
For Joanne Stefan.
She was, she's an alternate. She's serving.
But this is, appears to be the same application that was presented the first time, when she is appointed as an alternate. Am I correct?
What, it's the same application?
Okay, so in other words, this was never updated. It was.
Ask me the question you need to ask me, sir, so I can answer.
I asked you that question. In other words, you checked this for completeness. There are two categories that have never ever been filled in. She wasn't qualified the first time.
She has attended a meeting already. She's been an alternate.
But she asked, she, she was asked, list any education, training, or special skills you have, which may be relevant. There's nothing in there. And then the second question was asked, list any employment, volunteer work, or membership in a service, community, organization that you have served on or are now a member of. Nothing in there either. In other words, the application at very least should have been updated. If this is the same application, she wasn't qualified then. She's not qualified now.
Thank you. According to application. It's the same application?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions on A5?
No, and that's, oh, one other thing. This is a slate. Am I correct? In other words, you vote for all three, or you don't vote for any?
Yes, sir.
A6?
Mayor Protembaka, may I?
I'll vote on this.
Mayor Protembaka, may I interrupt for a quick second?
Sure.
On the last item, I misspoke, and I identified October 3rd as the date of your meeting. That meeting date is actually October 2nd. It's a Tuesday. My intention was to, for the first meeting date in October. So for the record, I just want to make sure that's clear. And if you guys concur, then I would ask you to articulate in the record that that meeting date is the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzamire. So it will be, item, was it G1? Will be moved to October 2nd, which is a regular city council meeting on a Tuesday. Thank you. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve item A5.
I'd have, I'd like to have some deliberation.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Marquez.
You know, I don't know why this would be in a slate because if you disapprove of one, there's other individuals that are gonna be punished by this. I would love to see this as separate slates in the future. Wendy, she's a fine, a fine person, should, should've been appointed tonight for that Emerging Leaders Council. I do have a problem with the next two. First of all, Robert Harris and Joanne Stefan. First of all, Robert Harris and Joanne Stephan have been up here at this dies, or at this podium in the past many, many months criticizing us up here, myself or Geiba. They're both, were on the committee to recall me. Now, we're going to appoint permanently to the Planning Commission. At the same time, they're going to be criticizing us up here. That's not right. I don't think they qualify. If they'd have to turn in another application, so it be. I do not approve of them to be full-time, permanent Planning Commissioners, but I do approve of the Emerging Leaders Council applicant. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I entertain a motion to approve item A5.
I haven't spoken yet.
I thought you did.
No, I asked a question. Now it's deliberations.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You beat me to it there, Dave. Wendy, you're very well qualified. If this was on separate motions, unfortunately, the way it's always presented is you cannot vote. If you, if there's one that you find unqualified, you have to vote against all three. So just like Dave said, we, we don't, and I don't want you to take that as a personal issue. That's done intentionally sometimes, and, and so if my vote would be no reflection, I assume that's, I assume that's you back there. Please, don't misunderstand. This is the way it works sometimes, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Cabrera?
Thank you. And so, yeah, on this item, we have Wendy Acuna. I mean, it's, it's been a pleasure actually to serve with you on the Emerging Leaders Council. I think together as a group, we've been able to do a lot and help out a lot of students, a lot of kids, the whole community. So I have no problem whatsoever, you know, extending your term for another one. And as far as applying commission, I, I don't see a problem there either. I think both Robert and Joanne have done a very good job so far as alternates, and I have no problem seeing them as full-time members of the Planning Commission. So if I may, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but if I can entertain a motion to move this item to our next council meeting, so, so we can take a look at that at the next council meeting.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll move this to October 2nd? Correct? Tuesday, October 2nd?
Or you could bring it back at your next meeting this month, I believe is the 18th.
Okay, we can do that too. Okay.
A point of order. Was that a question to, you want to continue this? Is that what this is? It's a motion to continue?
Staff recommends continuing this item until September 18th.
Attorney, is that a motion to continue? That's usually what I hear.
Yeah, staff is not making motions.
No, I know you didn't. I said, is this considered a motion to continue? Proper protocol.
Mayor Protem runs the meeting, and if she considers it a motion, it's a motion.
I'm asking staff to place it on the next city council agenda.
Correct.
Okay, item A6, Geiba.
Yes. I guess you guys have, it's a staff report. I'm not staff. Sorry. I asked for full report and a separate vote.
Item A6, City Clerk.
Mayor Protem, members of the council. As the staff report indicates, a member of the council notified the mayor that he would prefer not to serve on several of those internal commissions, committees, or in a liaison role. The mayor has put on the agenda a revised list of appointments to reflect that council member's wishes. That concludes staff's report.
So was there a written notice from the council member that said he did not want to be put on these?
Yes, there is.
Do you wish for me to read it?
Please.
This is an email from Councilmember Dave Marquez, and it's written to the mayor and CC to our city manager and city attorney. And the subject reads, refuse to accept appointments. On Friday, August 17th, I met with the city manager. During our one-to-one meeting, I informed him my decision not to serve on any more subcommittee that you were reappointing me. I refuse to accept your appointments due to every action that I have proposed, being declined by you and Mayor Protem. Remove me from all sub and commission appointments. Sincerely, David Marquez. And that's, you know, the best I could read it.
Thank you. Deliberations.
Any deliberations?
I do, but he's up there first.
Are we still able to ask questions right now?
Questions first, yeah, I didn't know.
Oh, sorry.
Before we move on to deliberations?
Go ahead.
Up to the chair.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I was going to ask which council member it was, but that, now we know. My next question is in here. You know, the, the changes that are being made as far as new council members or movements being around as far as, you know, me. Can you just verify which commissions, which boards I'm being placed on now?
Pat, would you please read the list?
I have it in front of me if you'd like. Mayor Protem, may I proceed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman Cabrera is primary on the Arts Commission, Emerging Leaders Council, Environmental and Historical Preservation Board, Library Commission, Traffic Safety Commission. He shares the responsibility on the Finance Subcommittee with Mayor Gutierrez.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to verify that and let everybody know, the residents, so that you know which, which ones I'll be sitting on now. Hopefully, everyone else can share which ones they'll be on as well. Thank you.
City Clerk, you'll be updating the city's website? Or is that someone else's?
Yes.
Responsibility? You will? Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, please. Well, we all know that you removed me from every one of those subcommittees and committees when you first got elected. But it would have been prudent on your part if Dave Marquez did not want to, that you should have addressed it to me as well. I do serve on this council, and I do represent this city. So what effectively is taking place here is you are giving the three, who are commonly referred to as the majority, the majority of all the decision-making in this city, effectively leaving out 50% of the residents' input by their representatives. Now, it was okay when Dave was there because Dave and I would often communicate, as we're allowed to do without violating Brown Act. So he understood my concerns and the concerns of my residents. But now there will be no voice. And three of those subcommittees are vital to the very beginning of our discussions on any topic that deals with finances, deals, deals with economic development, and deals with our safety in this city. There will be no voice from 50% or from, unless it's those people who they represent. To me, this is a travesty. This is wrong, and I would have been happy to fill some of those seats. Additionally, you have no alternates even assigned to those, which means if any one of the two of you are missing, that meeting is canceled because two is a quorum. So I would suggest to the residents, you might want to check and see how many of those meetings have been canceled due to lack of quorum or just canceled in general, so the public does not have an opportunity to actually weigh in on the concerns of this city. And that, to me, is very wrong and should not be continued to go on. You have an opportunity to come back and ask me. If David doesn't, you also have an opportunity to go back to David and say, are you sure, David? Can we work this out? That's good leadership. Okay, thank you.
Well, Councilman Geiba, we can't force Councilman Marquez to serve. If he's refusing to serve, that's his prerogative. And as far as being Mayor Protem, I don't have that responsibility. You'd have to take that up with the mayor. I strongly suggest that you sit down and voice your concerns and ask to be placed on subcommittees. So item A6...
Think I just did that.
He's not here. Item A6, if we can...
Mayor Protem, I'd like to speak.
Oh, go ahead. I am sorry, I'm looking at that screen. I apologize.
I've had a lot of phone calls about this, and it has nothing to do with our staff. Start off with, I've worked very close with the staff, and I hope that, that they think the same way, that appreciate their, their information, working with them. This, I'm not going to get into the, to the reasons why I'm not on there, but if the residents have a concern, you, you can call me, and I'll, you come in, and we'll sit down, and we'll discuss it. I don't think it's appropriate without the mayor being here. But I can tell you this. I have emailed the mayor. He's never replied to any of my emails or phone calls. And I'm just going to leave that as is. But I appreciate, Marshall, what you have done, what you have taught me while being on that subcommittee, and also with the staff being on the Public Sub, Sub Committee also. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So...
I'd like to say something as well. I know we need to get in the habit of looking at that. I'm not used to it either. But just very quickly, to both Councilmember Marquez and Councilmember Geiba, although I haven't received any emails or any requests for meetings, I mean, I'm more than happy to sit down and speak with you. If, if someone else won't respond to your emails, I will. I know when it comes to things, taking care of things outside of my district, I email you, I CC you as well. I keep you in the loop because it's your district. So if, if you'd like to talk about that with me, I'm, I'm all ears. You're more than welcome, and I'd be happy to sit down and meet with you.
Item A6, I would also like to place this on the September 18th calendar. That takes us to General Business, item G1. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, California, adding Chapter 12.45, parking regulations for vehicles connected for electric charging purposes to the Moreno Valley Municipal Code. Report of Financial and Management Services.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council members. The item this evening looks at the, the city's focus to promote the use of electrical vehicle charging stations, primarily located at City Hall, where we've installed three stations that basically fund or can charge up to six vehicles there. As we've seen demand over the last year increase, we've noticed that these stations are typically full throughout the day. With the stations only requiring about three and a half hours, three hours to charge a vehicle, the item this evening looks at restricting the time that electric vehicles can be parked in those spots to four hours, and this would just be the city-owned and operated EV chargers. This would allow for the higher demand so that we can address that demand and get more vehicles into those stations, charging throughout the day. With that, that completes my report.
Council questions of staff? Right, public comments, City Clerk? Thank you.
None.
Okay, council deliberation if desired. Okay. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number one. Motion by Ulysses Cabrera and second by David Marquez. Please vote. Motion passes for zero. Without the mayor being absent. Okay, item G2, resolution of the, I'm sorry, was there any public comments on G1? No, okay. G2, resolution of the City of Moreno Valley serving as the successor agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, approving the amended recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of January 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019. Report of Finance and Management Services.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. With this item, following the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency for the city, we're required to bring to the successor agency an annual recognized obligation payment schedule, also referred to as the ROPS. We had that item approved by the city council in January, around January 16, 2018. We are allowed to make one revision to that throughout the year. With our Robertson's Ready Mix, we do have an agreement that we have to modify every year at this one time. And so this item this evening is the proposed amendment for the payment to Robertson's Ready Mix, which comes out of the tax increment dollars, not out of the general fund or those items. This requires approval before we can take it forward to the County Oversight Board and then receive payment through the state on the recognized obligation payment schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions of staff? Councilman Marquez?
Marshall, what's, what's the price on that, or the payment, the cost?
The increase for this one is $102,000.
Okay, and this is the final one, you said?
This is not the final one, so this agreement, I want to say, we've got five-plus years on the Robertson's agreement.
Okay.
And then this is paid out of other dollars, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, public comments, City Clerk?
None.
Council deliberations? Anyone have any, anything else? I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number one through three. Okay, motion by David Marquez, second by Ulysses Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, the motion's approved by four zero, with the mayor being absent. That takes us to item H, reports, city council reports. And I think the only one we have is Riverside Transit Agency. Councilman Marquez?
Yeah, thank you. This month of, of August, RTA directors have been on vacation also. So this is just a brief of what went on while we were on vacation. Youth bus ridership typically drops during the summer months due to vacations and school recesses. This year, however, the RTA's Summer 25 Cents Promotion for the youth ridership reached a record levels. Between June 1st and August 21st, there was 170,000 youth using the bus. That's 27% higher than same time last year. The current promotion ends on September 3rd, but we look forward to additional promotions in the future. Also, on September 15th, the RTA is hosting a job fair. They're going to interview candidates for several positions. This country can be from bus drivers to maintenance workers to almost anything they have available at the RTA. So if you're looking for a job or you want to be a bus driver, come on out on September 15th, and it's at 1825 Third Street in Riverside. And if you have any questions prior to that, you can call RTA at 951-565-5000. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That, our next report is a city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'd like to remind residents that our annual Youth Fest will take place this Saturday. There will be lots of information booths, live displays, music, dance, and activity for youth as well as teens. It's a very popular event each year, and we look forward to another great program. It will run from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. right here at Community Park, just a few blocks from City Hall, and there's more information on our website. Second item, plans are underway for this year's Community Day of Service, where volunteers will gather at two sites to help beautify Moreno Valley. The activities will occur at the Equestrian Park and Nature Center, including the Hound Town Dog Park, love that name, as well as at the Rancho Verde staging area, which is located off Kentucky Derby Drive. Last year's event was great, and we look forward...
Last year's event was great, and we look forward to this year's event setting the bar even higher. The Day of Service is scheduled for September 29th, and there'll be more info available on our website as the event draws nearer. And that concludes my brief report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Next is our City Attorney's report.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmembers, very briefly, just a reminder, Measure M, we received the designation of M from the county, will be on the ballot, has been placed by the council on the ballot. Reminder that, obviously, no city funds can be spent on advocating for that measure. However, information, factual information, is available at mobile.org/measurem. So those who are interested can look at that on our website. Thank you.
And what is Measure M, actually?
Measure M is a measure that the council placed on the ballot to tax commercial cannabis businesses in the city.
And only the consumers would be paying this tax, correct?
The tax would be paid by the business owner.
By the business owner, okay. Based on their sales?
Based on the size of cultivation. I think it's at $15 per foot and up to 8% of gross revenues on the other businesses.
Okay. Thank you so much. This brings us to the reports and comments from councilmembers who did not speak earlier. That's all of us. You'll have five minutes for your closing comments. Councilman Guyba?
First of all, I hope everybody had a nice peaceful, and I like to say, peace-filled Labor Day. Lots of barbecue, or doing what it is you usually do on Labor Day. Unfortunately, not everybody could do that because there's still services that the community needs. And that includes our police and fire, who are active during that timeframe. But for the rest of you, I hope you had a good time. Saturday, the 8th, is the Military Picnic at March Air Reserve Base. I've been attending that for many years, and as a matter of fact, I just got a call from Senator Roth's office, actually his wife, reminding me and asking me if I needed any, but I don't have an ID card. I can get on base with no problem. So for those of you, especially from the staff, who would like to also participate, I'd suggest you contact March Air Reserve Base and flip hamburgers next to me and Senator Roth and Mark DiCanno and Rusty Bailey and a lot of us, and Marshall will probably be there, if I'm correct, because you are what they call a what?
Honorary commander.
An honorary commander, one of our own. So it is a wonderful opportunity for us to show up and support free food. I'm not sure if the libations are free, but they're at least a reduced cost at the very most. So it's a wonderful opportunity to meet the military that pretend defends us here. I will be at SCAG on Thursday, and I'll be at RCA on Monday, so the next reporting periods you at least have those. I also, on the 18th, will be at the SCAG Legislative Committee. So we will be talking about some of the legislation. And then for those who do attend, and I've been doing this since I've been a planning commissioner, will be the Water Task Force on the 28th. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Councilman Marquez?
Yeah, well, it's good to be back. It's been almost two and a half months, but I did survive a hurricane. And I'll tell you this, I'll take an earthquake anytime over hurricanes, so, you know, earthquakes happen just like that. Hurricane just takes its time coming through, so I'll take that. Morrison Park, Patty, I know they started working on it already. I wanna thank you and staff for what you have done out there. I've had numerous complaints. Complaints, would you believe it? How come we can't use our park? What are they doing to our park? I asked the residents out there, if you have any questions, go onto the city website. All that information's on there. Morrison Park's getting redone, all the ball fields, backstops, dugouts, the field, they're all getting redone. So I've had some complaints saying that, how come we closed down Morrison Park? And where are we gonna be able to play baseball? This is the time of season where the leagues don't play. So Patty was able to arrange that with the contractor to work on her fields, and I wanna say thank you very much, Patty. Next, I got the, to make the streets repairs, again, we're out there repairing the streets, and I'm getting calls from residents. How come there's only one lane open? This morning, I had two calls on Yoplaitas Valley View High School. There's one lane from, believe it was from LaSalle all the way to Mason. You ask for road repairs, we're doing it. Be patient with us, please. We'll get it done, and you'll be happy, everybody will be happy when these streets are repaired. One call I got was, why couldn't they do this when the school was out? Well, unfortunately, you just can't plan things right at the last minute. It just doesn't happen in government. So be patient with us. We're repairing our streets, and once that whole area is complete, everybody will be happy, believe me. I would like to propose tonight, well, I know that we all talk about public safety here, and I've proposed it before, and I believe it got tabled, a second squad for a fire department. I've spoke to many, many firemen, captains, battalion chiefs, and they would like to see that second squad. So I'm asking tonight that my colleagues give me the three votes to put it on the agenda in the near, near future, hopefully before the end of the year. We've got the squad, all we do is need the manpower. So I'm asking if we can put that on the agenda, if I can have three votes tonight.
And I'll second that for you, Dave.
Okay. Guess not. We talk about public safety and can't get a third vote. I understand. Last but not least, when I was elected to this council, it came with a little respect. And I expect to get that respect while I'm up here. Protocol says that when you're in the public, you address your council member, excuse me, as a council member, not as a mister. So Mayor Pro Tem, next time you address me, please mention council member, not mister. Thank you.
Councilman Cabrera?
Thank you. So, Councilmember Marquez, I understand where you're talking about hurricanes. I actually, I lived through Hurricane Ike. Man, I'll take an earthquake over a hurricane any day as well. As far as the firefighter item that you just brought up right now, I think it would be good, but I believe at the current moment, the police department is something that we should look at instead. Since we just, last year, we added another squad to the fire department, I think it's more appropriate to look at the police department right now, and then we can go back to fire. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. I just think right now, at the moment, the police is what we should be focusing on. So at a future day, I'd be more than happy to support that. Also, a couple different things. I only got five minutes. I don't know if the time started over again? I get a little over five then? Thank you. So, Tom, the city manager mentioned Community Day of Service. We had that last year, where we went to the base, and then there was a park as well. Over at the base, we did some painting, planted a couple trees. It was real nice. A lot of people came out, and it was a really good turnout. So anyone who lives over by Rancho Verde High School, or those neighborhoods, or any students who are watching right now, any teachers who might be watching, please, there's an opportunity to volunteer to beautify that area. I'll definitely be out there with everybody, so I'm looking forward to seeing you out there. Also, the Youth Fest, that's, we're bringing it back for another year. I think a lot of people turned out to that one as well. I was at the one last year. Real nice event. A lot of vendors come out. ELC was out there as well, doing their thing. So that's a nice event. And as far as Measure M, just wanted to touch on that one briefly. And reiterate the fact that that's not a, that's not a tax on the general public. That's a tax only for the cannabis businesses, and anyone who goes in and purchases from those cannabis businesses. So this tax that's going on the ballot is not specifically for any, for any purpose or for any single use. It's money that will be coming into the city, and, I mean, priorities have been talked about tonight, like the roads or public safety, or different things, addressing the homeless issue. So those, this is another way that revenues are coming into the city, and we can, we can see how we're gonna allocate those funds in the future to take care of different issues that are affecting our city. So just wanted to mention that, as we, cities all around California struggle to find funding for different things, this is one way that we're bringing that in. Also wanna mention, just very briefly, political signs, if I may. I haven't spoken out about this or even contacted PD, but I've noticed many different political signs for different candidates, being torn down and being taken. And, I mean, that shouldn't happen. If it's on property that it shouldn't be on, I mean, take it down, leave it there, but people are taking others' property, and that's just not right. So I just wanted to mention that, and if it does keep happening, I may have to reach out to the police department. Also, if you have not tried Woody's yet, over here on Alessandro and Frederick, I highly, highly recommend it. It's really, really good. They have a buffet during lunch. It's about $12 or so. They have beef brisket, salad bar, really good mac and cheese, tiramisu. I mean, check it out. It's really good. They just opened a couple weeks ago, and thank you to staff for bringing that out here. And if you can meet the owner, he's a real nice guy as well. Definitely check that out. Also, Mountain Mike's, and thank you, Mike Lee. I think your new nickname is Mountain Mike, right? That's what we're calling you? But thank you for putting together that business roundtable. It was really successful, and the pizza's really good, too. So I wish them a lot of success. Also, if we may, in my last minute and a half, request that we close this meeting in memory of my pastor, Dr. Steve Overton, who passed away last week. I would like to request that. He was the vice president of cops and clergy, and he'll be missed. And lastly, I just wanna mention the future of our, the future of our city. You know, we have the Amphitheater that we just approved, and also the skate park. Those are really big deals. Also, keeping in mind, the Olympics are coming to Los Angeles in 2028, and Lake Paris is gonna be the location for all the rowing sports. That's a really big deal. So even the years ahead of 2028, the ranger from Lake Paris, he mentioned, Mayor Pro Tem, we're on the joint task force together, he mentioned at one of our meetings that for several years before 2028, there'll be tournaments from universities and national teams, international teams, practicing and having tournaments at Lake Paris. That's a really big deal. So I'm really looking forward to that. And in addition to that, the future of our city, continuing to address the issues, like fixing the roads, finding different ways to fund those, because I think we're about $60 million behind in road repairs throughout the city. So we need to keep working on that, and also providing more services for our seniors, for our kids, for our students, and continuing to work together with the college, the school districts, the nonprofits, the clergy, everybody, the businesses. And I think we're moving in the right direction. We just, little by little, we're taking care of these issues, one step at a time, but making a lot of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cabrera. Wow. I mean, he didn't leave anything for me to say, except we're still, as a city, working with Moreno Valley College, with the Moreno Valley Unified School District, with the Mexican consulate, on a big event we're having here in Moreno Valley, at Moreno Valley College, which is El Grito, which is Mexican Independence Day, which will be held September 15th at the college from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Please bring your lawn chairs, and we're gonna have our very own students of Moreno Valley Unified dancing folklorico. We're gonna have some great singers that are also students in Moreno Valley. So families, come out and applaud our artists that live here in the city. I wanna say thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to chair this meeting as Mayor Pro Tem, and we are gonna close this meeting in remembrance of Pastor Steve Overton. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.